Thanks so much folks for giving us that moment to try and sort through what the procedurals are. And from my understanding, we do, as we mentioned, have appeal on the floor. The appeal of the chair is seventeen point three. If a decision is appealed, the chair shall give concise reasons for his or her ruling. And the members without debate shall decide the question and the ruling of the members shall be final. From my understanding, the appeal was for the point of order that we uh have an amendment to uh five point one, seven point one, seven point three, eight point one, eight point four, eight point five. Uh be uh adopted as per recommended. So on this appeal, all those in favor of the amendment request, please vote.
I'm sorry, can you?
I'm unclear about the question, like what the the I just want to understand, are we voting on the amendment or are we voting on the ruling of the chair?
We're voting on the appeal.
So is the question the the decision of the chair?
Correct.
Please reread that one more time. I also do not understand your wording.
All right. So the appeal, from my understanding, was the point of order that the chair has decided. All I mentioned, all items on the agenda have been selected for debate. That was the point of order. So the chair gave the reasons that all items on the agenda have been selected for debate as per nine point eight of our bylaw. That appeal was given, therefore there is no debate. So the appeal, from my understanding, is that the person who put the appeal in did not agree with the chair in saying that all items on the agenda have been selected for debate. So the appeal for that point of order, if I'm understanding it correctly, CAO, if I may, is to either agree that the the chair has said all items of the agenda have been selected for debate and we go forward with that. Or if you vote in the negative, you disagree with the chair. Is that accurate?
So we're going to uphold the decision of the chair or not?
Correct.
That, thank you.
So in this vote, we are voting to, at this point, to uphold the decision of the chair. All those in favor to uphold the decision of the chair. And that's four and all those opposed.
Nay.
Nay.
One, two, three, four. Therefore, four, four, that is lost. So we will go forward to the next item, which was a motion on the floor to approve the agenda. We had an amendment. The amendment was to delete five point four. So we will, as Counselor Chamsik had requested, to approve the agenda, accept the agenda with that amendment deleting five point four. Is everyone on board? All those in favor.
Aye.
Just for clarification, was the decision of the chair not just defeated?
The decision of the chair, pardon me, is
Was not upheld, so it was defeated. Correct?
Yeah.
So the point was not well taken.
Right.
Okay. Then doesn't the full amendment get read?
Then if we would like to vote on an amendment, I guess, are we back to that, voting on the amendment to five point one and
Madam Chair, I'll give you my recollection. I and I could be wrong and Counselor Hall can correct me. I believe he made a motion to um add back on or up to deal with five one and a number of different items, seven one, seven two um by way of consent. Uh so and which would be an amendment to the motion from Counselor Chamsik to adopt the agenda. I believe that's an amendment to that. I is this, is that correct, Counselor Hall?
Yes, and then that was the amendment and then we've split that into two portions. We voted on half of it. We haven't voted on the amendment to adopt those six items, to to adopt the recommended motions as presented with the approval of the agenda.
Correct. So there's an amendment to the motion to adopt the agenda, which was made by Counselor Hall, and that's to deal with those numbered items basically as consent agenda. Uh that's my recollection.
So we're now voting on that amendment.
On the amendment by Counselor Hall.
My goodness.
I'm sorry, I'm still confused though. Um as we've already said, we wanted to discuss all items of the agenda. Now we're being railroaded by one person who wishes to not give us the opportunity to speak.
The point of order was appealed. I would like to discuss eight point four. Okay, so what we have is an amendment on the floor that we have to vote on, so that will determine whether or not we're able to discuss eight point four. So on the amendment, as given by Counselor Hall, that five point one, seven point one, seven point three, eight point one, eight point four, and eight point five be as the uh passed as per recommended motion, as the recommendation on the report. Is that accurate, Counselor Hall?
That's the motion that I've read out a number of times.
All right, is there any discussion?
Um, I would like to request that we split the question and vote on eight point four separately, please.
Thank you. Is there any other discussions or requests? All right, so on the amendment to accept the recommendation on the reports for five point one, seven point one, seven point three, eight point one, and eight point five, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye, trying to get aye, sorry.
So that is four, all those opposed. Four. Therefore, that motion is defeated. So that, as far as I understand, puts those items back on the agenda. Is that accurate? And everyone in the same place? The amendment failed. Correct? Just want to confirm before we move on to the next item. On the amendment to have eight point four added as the recommendation on the report, all those in favor. All those opposed.
Nay.
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 That motion is defeated. Therefore, we will be discussing eight point four. Is that accurate? And everyone is
What was the count?
Four and four.
So then we won't be discussing it because we just ordered to
Pardon me, the motion was, I pardon me. Well, it is the community events calendar, therefore we will discuss it in another day. Pardon me for that. I apologize, Counselor Chamsik. Now, on the motion to adopt the agenda as amended, which would include eight point four being removed to discuss, it was automatically recommended as per recommendation. All those in favor? It's been already recommended as port according to the report, eight point four. Correct?
Um. I thought the only amendment that we actually voted to keep was the deletion of item five point four, not eight point four.
Five point four was already voted on and deleted. Okay? Can we get through this so we can invite our delegates in? All those in favor to adopt the agenda as amended?
Aye.
How many did we get from Zoom? I couldn't hear.
Aye.
So it's eight and zero?
No.
Nay.
Thank you. I did not hear the opposed.
You didn't call for the opposed.
I didn't hear you say nay, aye. Think we're going to now move on.
I didn't vote. You haven't called for opposed.
Well, I'm really sorry when we're not able to hear when you say aye or put up a hand, so I'm
We'd say nay when you call, if you're, if we're voting opposed, I will say nay. I won't say aye if I'm voting opposed. You need to call for opposed.
All those in favor will start again and we will hold our hands up for all those in favor of adopting the agenda as amended. All those in favor, hold your hands up. One, two, three, four, five. Who said the aye? Because I cannot see. So that would be Counselor Wallach. So that's six, correct? All those opposed.
Nay.
Thank you. Six and two.
Thank you for calling for our vote.
We will now move over onto our agenda, item four point one. We have a delegation. If we would please invite those people in, that would be great. Thank you. Right. Good morning, everyone. How welcome. Thank you so much for being here. Um, we're here to hear your report. Um, with regards to what's been happening in your divisions, um, we'll start with introductions if I, if we can. And we'll start with Counselor Fromwell, please.
Good morning. Welcome for being here today.
Good morning, Joe Grill.
Morning, Rob Minz, Division Eight, Southeast Lake County.
Morning, Ashton Anderson, Caswell, Larry.
Emily Chadwick, Division Seven, Grosse Time, Grosse Bita area.
And we, joining us in Zoom, we have Counselor Hall and Counselor Kapitanyak. We seem to have lost Counselor Wallach. And I'm Reeve Holland and I'm Counselor for Division Five. If you'd like to go ahead and introduce yourselves and then we'll be you.
Uh Sergeant Lee Simpkins, Unit Commander for Boyle Athabasca Traffic.
Sergeant Gavin Murphy, Operations NCO at Athabasca Detachment.
Thank you so much. And of course, we have CAO Beck and we have Tammy Floyd, who is our Recording Secretary, and Jordan Schenkelberg, who is with our communications. Please, thank the floor.
I'll start off uh these for the Athabasca detachment. We've had the, in the second quarter, we had a pretty good quarter so far. The two priorities that we were focusing on were the breaking enters throughout the whole uh Athabasca area, as well as habitual offenders. That seems to be where that we've had uh most of our success is dealing with the repeat offenders over and over again. The, as far as the uh break in airs go, we had seventy two incidents, like, so when I'm talking about this again, just to remind everybody, the Athabasca does cover the MD of Opportunity, Colling Lake, and Athabasca Town, and then the county as well. So we have a quite a large area. So we had seventy two incidences uh in the second quarter. Uh this does put us ahead of where we uh and our targets were. We're trying to get it down to a hundred and fifty incidents for the year. I'd like to see zero, unfortunately. Uh, we are, we're still, we still are going to get a few of them. So we are ahead on that. As far as the intelligence, uh let policing habitual offender, we have uh ha, we are at approximately seventy seven point three six percent compliance rate, which is up from last time. Uh, the, these guys are either being trying to be good, or we're actually catching them before they commit further crimes on on this upbreaching their condition, you know, sentence orders, things like that. So we've had some success on on our two priorities for this uh this that quarter. On the topic of uh of uh community and connect community involvement, we were doing the coffee with a cop in town here. Uh, having uh one of the uh corporals was out meeting with the public, getting uh feedback from the public on how we were doing, what we needed to focus on, just getting that that connection with the community. So that was happening quite a, quite a bit in the, during the summertime there. As well as we have, I'm sure most of you are familiar with now, uh David, he's working with the rugby team. Yeah, they've been quite active in the community as well, doing all kinds of different events and stuff. They've had some pretty good success with that. Uh, we also had uh members at the Terry Fox Run, running in the uniform with the, with the kids. And one of my, my most junior member did a party program. Party program is uh is dealing with impaired driving. They brought in MAD to talk at the high school, so it does affect the county side of things as well. Kids going to the high school, they're great presentation, lots of good feedback from that. Of note for files over this past few months, uh we had, um unfortunately, we had that youth pass away in that car crash just uh west of town here on on the highway. I can't get into details of it because it is still under investigation. Uh, we also did, we reopened the Lorraine Popovich search. We had some information that we, we were uh gonna, we followed up on, I brought the search team in again to search that property. We brought in uh quite, quite extensive resources again to to search. We unfortunately still didn't find her in in that area there. So the file does remain open and it's something we will probably hit up again this springtime here once the snow is gone. We um during that, during this time period, also we had uh a an individual south of uh town in the, in the county who was having a hard time and he, we ended up bringing in um our, our team, SWAT, our, our team, our negotiators, a lot of different resources from Boyle, from Westlock, from Edmiston, all to help address that situation. It would be, it was, there was firearms involved. And it was a pretend situation, but it was resolved very, very successfully. And and uh I, since then, I've had an opportunity to talk to this individual and it's uh sounds like you, they're doing well. The it's part of that letter that uh came out with this package here. They talk about body worn cameras in there. We're not getting ours in Athabasca. We're scheduled for April. We'll see if we will uh get them around that time there. Uh, we're looking, I'm looking forward to having them. Uh, it's a great piece of uh kit, a big, good tool that uh we'll be able to use uh to help further investigations and or to deal with the concerns with some of the public. So there was in uh July to September, there was thirty three percent decrease in total offenses uh in for twenty twenty four compared in, for twenty twenty-four compared to twenty twenty-three. They dropped four hundred nineteen to two hundred seventy-nine incidents. It's a, that's a very good improvement. We're seeing that, that kind of graph in here. Persons crimes, we saw a decrease of twenty-six percent. Property crime, thirty-nine percent. Drug offenses, we went from two to three cases. Total federal acts, twenty-nine percent decrease. And that, again, these numbers, when I'm saying this, we went from fourteen to ten, so it's not huge, huge numbers for this area here. Collisions always seem to be an issue. We have the, lots of deer strikes and things like that. We were actually, in this time period, we went, we dropped thirty-two percent. We went from a hundred to seven incidents as opposed to seventy-three incidents. And I won't talk too much about traffic offenses because I'll let my partner here talk about that, but. Their persons crimes increased. Yeah, overall, persons crimes increased by nine percent from twenty twenty-two to versus twenty twenty-three, and property crime has a slight decrease of two percent. So we're actually seeing a lot of good things coming, coming out of the work that's being done in the, in the area here. A lot of good, the, I think the, we contribute to the amount of time we spend dealing with habitual offenders, the time we spend in the community dealing with, making connections with people. We've seen a lot of good, good things come of it. So with that, I won't go through all the numbers on the, on that page unless anybody wants to, has any specific questions about these, this chart that we sent, but that's my part of the presentation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions, or should we wait till the very end? We'll wait till the very end. All right. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Thanks for the invite. I just have to say that Sergeant Perezy from Boyle, he got called to a file about twenty minutes before I arrived here, so he won't be showing up today, so he sends his apologies. This is a snapshot of the statistics that we have for the last three months. Just one note there, we did a huge road check in the county on Saturday night because it was National Impaired Driving Day across Canada. And even I had to work. And just happy to say that we, we screened over ninety drivers at that road check. And we only received four digital readings indicating there was alcohol in the driver's body. However, they were below the threshold of any sanction. Other than that, it was complete zeros across the board. So accolades to, to the drivers out there that we didn't end up with any stats at night, so. That's, that's good on, on the community's part and, and the road safety initiatives that we've been promoting, so. Yeah, so in, so that said, in the, in the last three months, we've only gotten one criminal impaired driver. We've had five IRS cautions or twenty-four hours combined. One other criminal code file, the alcohol cannabis stuff, it's a little bit on the rise here. We've got ten incidents of that. So that's anything from, you know, unpackaged cannabis to, to liquor within reach. I believe there were some illegal cigarettes in there as well. I was finding a lot of those in the, on the roads. Forty-six seatbelt tickets within that three months. We wrote eighteen distracted driving, so cell phone tickets, hundred ninety-one speeding tickets, and sixty-one other tickets, so that could be stop signs or other offenses, prohibited driving or driving while unauthorized. We conducted nine, we executed nine warrants, so people that had warrants for their arrest. One of my fellows did a street check on one person. And we did a total of twenty-three operations, so that would be either seatbelt, cell phone operations, or, and or impaired driving road checks. So on average, we're probably about eight of those a month. In that timeframe, we conducted five hundred and fifty mandatory alcohol screening, so we screened five hundred and fifty drivers on the road. And that's between the three of us, but quite frankly, it's more like maybe one and a half of us on the road at the times because I'm mostly in the office. We attended two collisions. And we assisted the detachment, so Athabasca Boyle forty-seven times. And my guys work, were nice, and they wrote seventy-five warnings. Pretty much all I have.
Thank you very much. I know you're very busy. Thank you. And is that, are we, are you presenting as well, or?
No, I'll just introduce myself. This is my first day in Athabasca. A lot of you might remember me from Boyle, where I was the corporal over there, so I just recently got promoted to Athabasca. And, which is nice because I don't have to move. I live halfway between Boyle and Athabasca, and my wife works in Athabasca, kids go to daycare here, so. I'm really looking forward to my no cost transfer and starting here in Athabasca. So my role is the Operations NCO. I'll be looking after the corporals in Athabasca and the files, managing high risk files. And then if any major unfolding event involving firearms or things like that, I'll have a look after too, so. My background is, I was in Fort McMurray for seven years. I was part of a crime reduction unit there with, we did mostly overt enforcement on prolific offenders, warrant management, things like that. So I bring that to the table here, and then I spent five years on the emergency response team in Edmonton as a sniper there, and then transferred to Boyle for the last three years, and now here I am in Athabasca with the intent to stay, so. Really looking forward to it.
Fantastic. Thank you. Welcome. That's awesome. Nice to hear. All right. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Counselor Cromwell?
No, just thank you all very much for what you do, staff. Good luck with your new sergeant. I know he's been great for our community out in the Wandering River area, and I know he's done great work with Boyle detachment, so I'm sure you're going to be very happy with him, and sorry that we lose him from my part of the county, but congratulations to the rest that they gained Sergeant Berkey, so thank you all very much.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Sergeant Simpkins mentioned charges for alcohol within reach, and being that it's the holiday season, and there's a lot of people purchasing such items and maybe transporting them home or to a party or whatnot. Could we maybe hear a reminder on what the recommended ways to transport such items are in your vehicle? You know, not on the passenger seat and.
Put it in the trunk. This can't be in the reach of the driver for pretty much any occupant in, in there, so. You know, if you have an SUV, obviously, in the back. I have a little mini truck. It's a right-hand drive, so I had to put a toolbox in the back, so I can put, if I go to a liquor store, I can put my liquor in the back, because in the mini truck, I can touch the window on this side, so. So it's, can't be in the cab with me either, so yeah. Put it in the back, I, I guess, make sure it's not in reach, otherwise it'll be a ticket.
Thank you. Anything further? Nope. Anybody else? Um, yeah, go ahead, Counselor Gerlach.
It's actually quite impressive when you said you had the, the check stop and, and you had ninety people that, that you checked out and, and. Was it on a, just a weekday or toward a weekend, or?
Because it was this past Saturday, December seventh, was National Impaired Driving Day across Canada, so every division from British Columbia to Prince Edward Island was doing road checks on the seventh of December.
That's a big improvement, isn't it?
Yeah, and I talked to our partners in like Westlock and St. Paul, and they pretty much struck out as well.
Excellent. Thanks.
There was a stat from, I think, south of Edmonton, where a whole bunch of sheriffs and everybody all got together, and they screened over, I think it was thirty-five hundred drivers, and they ended up with four sanctions. So that's, it's pretty good on the driver's side of things, anyway.
Awesome. Anybody on Zoom wishing to weigh in? Doesn't look like we have any hands up there. And I think, is that everybody? Well, again, thank you so much for all that you do and for being here today. I know your schedules are extremely busy, and the holiday season makes it even busier, so we certainly appreciate everything you're doing out there for us and, and for our communities, and keep up the excellent work because we know you're doing very well out there. Thank you so much. Yep, I think we're done. All right. Thank you. Happy holidays to you all. Stay safe. Our other delegate is due for ten thirty, correct? Okay. I think we just need a couple of minutes here, or? Nope, we'll go on. So maybe we can actually get through to three point one before our delegate arrives. Three point one is the page five and six of your agenda, and it is the approval of the minutes, the Special County Council Meeting, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there any discussion?
Counselor?
I understand the practicality of declaring a recess once we've lost quorum. But is that something we can actually do, or? Like, should it be recorded in the minutes? Is it an actual declaration of a recess? Or is it just kind of pausing and trying to reconnect with people if possible?
I'll defer to the C A O for answer to that question.
I'm, could, could you please clarify the question? I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure of what your question is.
It says that Reeve Holland declared a brief recess at one thirty-two P M., and then the meeting was adjourned due to not having quorum, and I'm just wondering if that should be in the minutes, or if there was actually a formal recess, because without quorum, can't really declare a recess, so.
I don't think you need a motion to declare a recess, if I'm not mistaken. And yes, we declared a recess to see if we could bring people back. If, we wondered if it was on our end, if it was technical difficulty, but it was not, so we determined, we determined that, and is it accurate? We do not need a motion for a recess, check, pardon me, C O?
Correct. I, I believe it's, it's worded exactly as it occurred.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to check, sorry.
Nope, thank you. Is there anyone else to have anything that they'd like to discuss on, before we go to a motion? Is there a motion? Thank you. Counselor Cromwell would like to accept the Special Count, County Council Meeting, November nineteen, twenty twenty-four minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it looks like that's an aye, so it looks like there's no opposed, and that would be eight and oh. Three point two, regular county council meeting, November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, approval of the minutes. Is there a motion? Counselor Minns, as accepted, as presented, except as presented, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Hall.
I'd like to propose that after the approval of the agenda, the words, quote, "so members can get printout of agenda issues with emails not being received," are deleted. They're unnecessary in the, in the minutes and in fact aren't true. The issue was the, some individuals were working from an agenda that was not properly circulated, not, it didn't have to do with the, the minutes, and I think it's just better to leave it as a recess, showing a start and an end time and call it there. So I'd propose those words be deleted.
Are you proposing to delete the words, "issues with emails not being received"?
Beginning with "so members can get," like, right from there. It should just say, "declare the recess at nine thirty-two, reconvene at nine forty-five."
So the request, and if, so I just have it straight because you're difficult to hear, so members can get printout of agenda, issues with emails not being received, you would like deleted?
Correct.
All right. Does anybody else have anything further that they would like to? Okay? Now, in.
And, and if there isn't a motion to approve the minutes as amended, I would make that motion.
That motion was already there, so this would be an amendment to the motion. So we will vote on the amendment.
We don't typically.
Pardon me?
We don't typically vote on corrections to the minutes. We talk about them, and if there's no objections to them, we move on with an amended version.
I believe you asked for an amendment to the minutes to have items removed.
I asked for a correction to the minutes. Yes, that's correct.
That would be an amendment, as you mentioned, and the motion would have to include the words amended as amended, so that is an amendment, so we will vote on that amendment to delete those words. All those in favor to delete from the minutes the words, "so members can get printout of agenda issues with emails not being received"? All those in favor? I. That is three. All those opposed. And that is five. That amendment has failed. On the motion.
Then, could we record in the minutes, Madam Chair, that a further amendment that the agenda was not properly circulated?
You would like a further amendment?
Well, I, I think we should record the truth of what happened. The, 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 the issue at that moment was that not all of council had received the agenda that the table was working from. Yet, so the agenda that we start, the meeting was opened with was not the agenda that was circulated seventy-two hours in advance.
So you would like a second amendment?
Well, I would like us to record the truth. I'm not sure how you want to handle it.
Well, you're asking for the minutes to be amended as they are written. The wording that you would like to add, I'm not sure exactly how that was stated, so if you'd like to state that again, please.
All right, maybe we could just have administration double check the recording of the meeting and.
Well, when we are going to vote on an amendment, it should be absolutely stated, so if you could please state that, or we'll just move to go with the initial.
Then we should record that the issue was, the Reeve was working from an agenda that was not properly circulated to council.
So the amendment is add the words to record on the minutes, the issue was the agenda was not popular, not properly circulated. Is that accurate? As I'm just trying to write this down as quick as I can.
Sure.
All right. On the amendment to add the words, and this will be the final amendment, we're only allowed to, to record the issue, to record on the minutes, the issue that the agenda was not properly circulated. All those in favor to add those words on this amendment?
Aye.
That would be three. All those opposed. That would be five. The amendment has failed. So the original motion was to accept the regular county council meeting as presented. And that was yours, Counselor Minns? All those in favor? Five, all those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
That would be three. Motion carries. Is our next delegate, we've got a few more minutes. I'm not sure if we can go through.
I would recommend a four-minute recess, Madam Marie.
Let's do that. Yeah, we'll go ahead and do a recess until our delegation is ready. Thank. Good morning. Thank you for being here today. We are at four point two of our agenda, which is a Trident pumps delegation presentation. Um. I think we will start here with introductions, if we may.
Good morning. Thank you for being here, my friend Gary Cromwell, Division Six, far north up into putting wandering river.
Good morning, Joe Gerlock from the deep south, Rockfish, Georgia area, please.
Morning, Rob Minns, Division Eight, Baptiste Lake Island, Lake area.
My world now, your world now.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson. I reside in Division Three, which is the Boyle-Caslin area.
Thank you.
Kelly Chamsak, Division Seven, Grassland, Crossfield, Atmore areas.
Thank you. I'm Reeve Holland and Counselor for Division Five, which is east of Athabasca. And I'm just trying to figure out if we do have some members on Zoom. Just checking out our screen here and we'll give them an opportunity, pardon? Okay, so we do have two uh counselors who are on Zoom. We can't see them, but uh it is Counselor Hall and he is from Division Four and Counselor Capitania, who is from Division Two. Uh, that's also attending and. We have C O Beck. We have our recording secretary, Tammy Lord, and we have our communications. Is it director or manager?
Coordinator.
Coordinator, Communications Coordinator, Jordan Shankleberg with us here today.
Thank you very much.
And if you would like to go ahead, just a couple of of items, if you could please keep your presentation within fifteen minutes. If you do need more time, we'll. Uh, do a consensus to see if that's uh something that council will be able to allow. And please go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. I've given you handouts. Um, it's not the same as the the presentation that we're providing, so I'm going to refer to those handouts of. And they should be in order, but um. Again, thank you for allowing me to be here today. It's very important that I'm in this room. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, today we're going to talk about being ready. Ready to protect our lands, our infrastructure, and I'm here to show you some examples of what the Trident can do to help with critical readiness. Uh, eight or nine years ago, when I was the owner of Trident Communications, uh Ron Jackson came into my office with this. Unique request. He asked for. A cellular enhancement for a gravel pit. Thought it was odd. Um, so we went and checked it out and what he required was he had to get a rental pump. To get the water out of the pit. But he needed a security group and a security shack just to protect that pump, just to keep that pump there while the operation was going. So we calculated about. I tried to do a guesstimate about two thousand dollars a day just to pump out that one pit for all that rental equipment that is required. And recently I had a look at your twenty twenty five budget and I was amazed at the level of detail you guys tried to achieve. When you're looking for funding. And the reason why I bring up the Ron Jackson story. How do you foresee costs like that when you were never ever planning on pumping out that gravel pit in the first place? Hi, my name is Rick Box. I'm with Trident Pumping. Some of you may know me as the current sitting president of the Athabaskan District Chamber of Commerce. I'm also the vice president of the Road to Hope, but today I'm sitting you here in front of you with as a local business owner. And as of last month. Um, I'm in Rod's Rob's area. I'm uh I moved back to the county uh where I started when I first moved to town. Uh, my goal here today is to show you with the Trident solution um to to better understand. How to feel ready in situations like the Union Fire and other events that you may or may not have planned for. In this first handout that you have there, it's an info note based on what happened up on eight eighty one. So we got a call from Alberta uh Transportation. The the road was flooding, their hot seat wasn't keeping up with the water. Um, there's a timeline that's based there on the side. I won't go through it. But you can see how fast we were able to get there and start flowing water. Um, on the left, you can see an example of it, a typical pump of the same power and throughput. Um, it's large, uh it damaged the road, it it closed the road. There's lots of large infrastructure that takes to get that a piece of equipment there. It has to be perfectly level. It has to be in an area that it has to, it it can be placed with the equipment that's provided. And then below it, you can see the Trident were sitting at about a thirty degree angle um and basically didn't even have to hook a discharge hose to it. We just shot it over the bank and into the in into the free flowing water. So. And at the bottom, you can actually see the water that we were able to move in the timeframe that we were there. If the Trident solution was used in a Ron Jackson situation, this pumping asset could have returned every night. With the operator. Removing all those extra costs associated with the watering of that one pit and then ensuring that all the high valued assets return to a safe location each and every night. As. As tough as it is to budget for um. Sometimes it's also very difficult. To deal with safety. And this next info note. Is based on a meteor shower that we had just north of Thorium. Some of the key takeaways on this is we got called about three days after it started. Uh, um. The water that they required for the water tenders were at the new Pine Creek fill station. So it was about an hour, hour and six minute turnaround time. To get back and forth to it. Um, when we got there, we found two dugouts that were inaccessible for current uh equipment that you have. And we were able to turn that turnaround time from an hour and six minutes down to twelve minutes. Which completely changed the way they attacked the fire. They allowed them to literally dump straight from the the water truck straight into the pit. The firefighters also had water that they never had access to before. And this and it made it safer for them because they didn't have to worry about running out of water as the trucks were traveling back and forth. It also made it safer for the the water tender operators as they told us. When they enter an exit highway sixty three with that heavy load, trying to get up to speed with all those tractor trailers coming up and down against them. It's scary little road at the best of times, not carrying water like that. So it would, it made a. A big impact on the safety of that operation and and we we made a huge impact on that fire and helped contain it. And also happen about this time of year, too, was crazy having put out fires in the winter. The next one that I've put up for you, this is a couple of pages. You can read it um at your leisure. Um, this one happened just south of the Hendy. Um, it. It required fifteen different fire crews and about sixty firefighters. They also applied um Alberta Health Services and the R C M P to evacuate the homes. Um. You can't see it in the image. There's one right between the houses, but there's multiple standing waters that were. On the property in the grassy field that the fire was happening, but existing equipment didn't allow them to uh um access it. Um, and luckily they too had favorable winds. In our area, which direction is is the prevailing wind? What's way does the nor wind normally blow? For. Northwest from the northwest, right? Um, yeah, you're right. And imagine our downtown core. If we had that typical northwest winds when we had that Union Fire. Which way would that fire would have blown? We got lucky that that wind was coming from the south. As part of our testing and to create exposure to our disruptive technology and methodologies, we've been working with B C Wildfire for years. First, as a fee for service to show them what our system can do. And then after two years of testing. They purchased their first two systems and we're excited to say that they're in, we're in the process of delivering their next two systems right now. They're they're in there getting polished up as we go. In spring of twenty twenty two, B C had a Beaver Dam that was threatening to spill over its banks again. Last time this happened, there was a one point six million dollars worth of damage that was created from this Beaver Dam. Uh, so B C deployed. A twelve person crew with six of their standard pumps. And it took eleven days of continuous operation and the end result wasn't favorable as they didn't really change the water level at all. In April of twenty twenty three, same dam, same flood risk. However, this time they had the Tridents. And they provide two Trident systems with a four man crew each. Um. They were able to reduce the water level to below twelve inches. In under fifteen hours of operation. So we went from a one point six million dollars worth of damage to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar failure to about a thirty thousand dollar. Success story. With the right equipment. In the handouts, I provided you with a pamphlet. Um, all right, on the front underneath the writing, it says, um, it 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 says saving your community. Um, that was Ron uh French. He he was the the Director of Fire Services for B C Wildfire Services and and he sent us that picture. So. We're quite proud of of B C Wildfire and and them being happy and repeat customers of ours. After years of testing, our main goal was to put these into uh communities and First Nation communities that had limited portable water. Uh, Wabaskaw Big Stone First uh Cree First Nations received their first system this year and. We were blown away by all the stuff that they have done with it this first year. Um, they've given us examples of the usages that we we didn't even thought even think of. Um, like they de wa the the. Diverted water. When they had a water main break, they were actually able to use the system to divert that water. And they've also set up fee for services um with the oil companies up there for all their little ponds and their and their holding wells that they have. Um, so they're utilizing it outside of fire in in some situations. They also set up a fee for services with Alberta Wui and that's the wildland urban interface. Um, and their first deployment that lasted eleven days, they were able to save and protect the Hammond of Chip Lakes. Um, from the fire that went through there just this year. Um, it would have take um. It would take just four more of those eleven day deployments. For them to pay off that system. So as a fee for service, there's some value in having a piece of equipment. And and I know you guys utilize. In some situations with insurance and stuff, you have equipment that you can you can bill back. Uh, they now feel ready, ready to make decisions on what's important to them and what they deem is valuable. Uh, B C Wildlife Services is calling the Trident solution the new industry standard. Uh, Big Stone Cree First Nation, they purchased their system. To match the standard. And with this system, they've established this day rate based on a twelve hour day, ensuring that they are ready to deploy as needed. Importantly, the same rate can be applied to using the system during major events like wildfires, floods and other emergencies where. Protecting a property at risk. In my original letter to you guys, I was speaking a little bit about an eighty twenty cost sharing. And this was a mentality that we came up with. That may be something that helped with the financial side. Um, it is eighty twenty cost sharing model. The initial financial burden may is minimized for each department. Public works would bear the majority of the costs. As a system would heavily be utilized for you to routine maintenance and seasonal infrastructure work. The fire department with the smaller contribution gains a critical resource for fire suppression. Now you guys already have funds allocated to wildfires, road repairs, stormwater management, erosion, flooding. The Trident Pumping Solution will maximize these investments and also help prevent damage during extreme weather events and fires. This collaborative funding approach. Ensures the maximum value for each dollar spent. This last case study in your handout is called a peat moss fire. This was the job that happened. During the Jackfish Lake Fire. So talk a little bit about the Jackfish Lake. Um. It was. Declared uh May third, uh May and then July twelfth, it was put out. Um. Just to point out a couple of things, that helicopters down there, there was two helicopters in that. That's a hundred thousand dollars a day. For those two helicopters. Seven million if they used it throughout the whole seven day or seventy day fire. In this example, if we did what we did for. Alberta Forestry, because during this, we we reached out to, we spoke a little bit with Athabasca County. Um, about the one system that we hadn't in the office at the time. Uh, we even went out to the site a couple of times and and we ended up actually putting a system out. The only system we had to Alberta Forestry and we ended up going to end whistle. And we had a peat moss fire in that whistle at the same time we had a peat moss fire here. So and then the example that spelled out into your um into your handouts and and is up on the board as well. Um, we talk about how with the Trident solution, we were able to with a two man crew. One hoe and operator, we were able in three days to put out that whole fire. And it allowed. Them to be able to access um. The fire with all the water they needed. So the whole operator was a god. He was amazing at it, but um. In this example with that we did with Alberta Forestry. Um, the one Trident solution was able to put that out. And then they reutilized this to go over and and we put out. Uh, we provide hand lines and water lines at another location where we actually had uh gentlemen from South Africa working the line and. And we were refilling ponds that they had drained during the fire so that the 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 farmers were able to utilize their ponds again afterwards and um refilled them up. If the Trident solution was owned by the county and was deployed at the time the Jackfish Lake Fire was detected, we are confident that the. Fire would have been extinguished in about the same amount of time. Drastically reducing the cost to just one day of helicopter usage. In conclusion, I wanted to provide you with three numbers to consider. You have a budget. Of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for wildfire. You have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a new light item that you've got budgeted for on call. For emergency services. So that must be something new that you guys are just working on. And and I'm sure there was a lot of deliberations on how much and 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 how that was going to work. The last number is thirty four days. If you had this system. Thirty four days. A fee for service would pay for the system, would pay for. That four five hundred thousand dollars that you guys got allocated. This is the total number of days needed to cover both those operating costs. Now, I'm not, I'm not here to to introduce you or to sell you on a product that's coming from the U K or United States or even in other red deer. Um, we patented this and we received uh awards at the Geneva Patent Convention. We built it. We live here, it's promoted here. Um, and we have this ever growing presence in the eh. In Alberta, Canada, we also have patents across in a few other states. Um, Athabasca County could be the world headquarters of this innovative solution, and I hope you guys see the value in having one here and 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 promoting locally. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation and information. It's very informative. I appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions? For our presenter? I see Counselor Hall's hand is up. Go ahead, please.
Uh, Rick, I just wanted to thank you for coming to talk to us about this. You know, we're we're located, of course, on the margins of the boreal forest. And um. I think it's something that we can really celebrate as a region that this kind of innovative technology and just is being produced locally, thought up here. And it's been exciting for me to watch the growth and. Of your firm over over time. You know, when when wildfire is ever present for us, I think it's a real opportunity for us to. To consider as a region, how we. How we act as leaders in wildfire fighting and, um, thanks for sharing this with us.
Thank you.
Does any other councillor have a question, comment, councillor Mins?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for the presentation. I've, I've been around it, round them before and that, um. Do you have any for, for lease, like, like, let's say all of a sudden we get a big wildland fire. Uh, in Athabasca County here, could we come to you and and lease one? Or anything like that, or rent one or or something like that?
So we are, uh, right now, as we're wrapping up, we are an on demand inventory, um. Um, there is, there is, um, an option to do leasing. We're talking, we have a, a, a company that's working with us, um, that, um. That has talked, we're dealing with another group that that is talking about leasing with a buyback, you know, so, so that you could have. The updated technology every five years or something along that line. Um, we've had requests. My goal selfishly would be to have one there because when you guys have an emergency event called, you basically can throw whatever number. Whatever you can of that equipment of, of equipment at that fire. And then you've got to do the whole dance to, to get it paid back. So I would love to have one available. So if you guys had another one of those fires, you could say, hey, we want one. And then you figure out how to, how to pay for it at the time and then you have it in your fleet. Um, we were able in the past to be available to help, especially with the union fire. Um, was shocking that we actually had two sitting here at the time because of what was going on. Um, it was just a lull in, 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 in B C wildfires, uh, um, time. Um, we've also at, um, the RMA, I, I talked to, uh, the CEO at, uh, in Thorhild. And he's like, wow, you know, maybe there's a mutual aid that we can do with you and and. Our business model has shifted. We, we did fee for service because of how disruptive our technology is. We've basically taken an eight thousand pound pump and made it five hundred and seventy pounds. People don't believe that. So we needed to go out and do fee for service. We needed to show them what we have. Now that the demand is up, we're back into manufacturing and selling. So to have it there when you need it as a rental, we're trying. We want to have, we want to grow our rental fleet. We want to have that available, um. But the, the methodology that I think needs to be considered is utilizing that as what you own. And then mutually aid it out, just like you guys did with that ladder truck in Lacklubish, you know, that, that came. Um, if that wind would have shifted direction and we had a larger fire without those pumps. I don't know where the water level would have ended up being if we didn't have that access. And they did try with their fire trucks. They, they did try to get the water and it didn't work.
Yeah.
So to answer your question, there is work in place and opportunities in place. But I would love to sit down with you guys, not just in the, um, the matter of trying to, to put one into your guys' hands. But for me and my business development as a local business, how do I work closer with. Municipalities and counties. So that I can answer that question better moving forward when others are asking it.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Is there anybody else? Last call. All right. Thanks again for being here. We really appreciate the information you provided. And it is an extremely innovative system that you have put together there. So that's amazing and and helping so many. Uh, across Canada by the sounds of it. So that's fantastic. So thank you very much for that. Uh, we will be discussing it again further along in our agenda. Uh, it'll come back, uh, for us to have discussion. Um, you're welcome to stay in the gallery or you can even check it out on YouTube as we are live streaming and it will be recorded.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I'll let you be.
Thank you so much for being here. Oh, oh, pardon me. I see councillor Hall has a question.
No, um, actually on a point of privilege, I was wondering if we, uh, could declare a seven to ten minute recess.
Um, is, uh. Well, we do have quite, we had quite a bit of disruption here this morning. Um, if, if you may, uh, like you say, if you need time to be away, but please feel free. But we should be carrying on as we do have quite a full agenda yet today. Councillor Capitan.
Sorry, not to be disruptive either, but it is eleven and you gave us one four minute break. And that's not enough time to even go to the bathroom. Sorry. We have like seven minutes, please.
Thanks, Rick.
Yeah, thank, thank you for being here. Yep, yep, um. This will be probably the last one since we've just had a, a recess rate, uh, half an hour.
It was four minutes.
Yep, that's, that's, uh, that's where we're at. So if you'd like to take this, uh, time to use the washroom, please feel free.
So we can't go to the bathroom for fear of missing something in the meeting. Is that clear?
We still have form.
Wow.
All right, I believe our next item up is five point one, page thirty nine of your agenda. The Committee of the Whole, uh, Recommendation, uh, Development Enforcement Resolution CW two four one seven eight. The recommendation is that council defer, uh, discussion of development enforcement to the level of service discussion in twenty twenty five. Is there, uh, anybody who would like?
I'll move the recommended motion.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson would like to remove, pardon me, the recommended motion that council defer discussion of development enforcement to the level of service. Discussion in twenty twenty five. Is there any discussion? Councillor Chamsack.
Um, I was just wondering, um, do we have a timeline for the level of service to cut discussion to come forward? You know, I know that we're moving into a busy time with audits and year end and all that fun stuff. Um, would April may be sufficient, uh, for administrative time to prepare for that discussion?
Madam Chair, I have no idea. The first step is, uh, it's, it's included as a project in the twenty twenty five budget. So we'll see if that survives later today and then we'll know. That's the first step.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Alrighty, councillor Cromwell.
Development enforcement, I think, is a very important item for our county and for our taxpayers and moving forward. I do not support the recommendation to put it on the back burner for an undetermined period of time. I would like to amend that, uh. To bring that discussion back. To the next council meeting after we've talked more about budget.
We're going to be discussing budgets, uh, continually for a little while. So do you have an, uh, maybe a better timeline on what that would be for your amendments?
I'm, I'm thinking here because I really want to make sure that, you know, we factor. I think we should be factoring some level of development enforcement into the upcoming budget. But you know, we can always bring it back to later date. I can. Leave it for now.
So we'll take the amendment off the table. Okay. Alrighty, is there any further discussion? All right, so the motion, just on camera, come on. The motion is that council defer discussion of development enforcement to the level of service discussion in twenty twenty five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe there are no opposed, so that would be eight and O. Thank you. Five point two, page forty one. Uh, of your agenda is the Committee of the Whole Recommendation Resolution CW two four dash one seven nine. The recommendation is that council direct administration to prepare report for a future meeting regarding the ability to rescind a local improvement levy. Such as Collington water, water supply. Is there a motion? Councillor Mins?
I'll move the, the recommended motion.
Okay, is there discussion? Councillor Anderson?
Just to clarify, is the, uh. Intent for administration to seek legal advice as part of this report? CAO?
Uh, to be clear, madam chair, uh, we would require legal advice. That's why the motion is important.
Thank you, councillor Hall.
Um, I have, uh, I guess two comments. One is I'm wondering if, uh, the C A O or anyone at admin can provide us a. A guess on how much this is gonna cost. And from my perspective, we should vote, uh, in opposition to this. It is a colossal waste of time. We don't even know if the people who are subject to paying this levy, who would have agreed to it at the beginning, are unhappy with it right now. And yet we're, we're looking, it's, it's a solution in search of a problem. So I'm concerned about the cost and I think it's a colossal waste of time when we have other more important priorities for our men to focus on.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Sorry, there was a question to admin re, uh, that, is there any guess on what this is gonna cost? Madam Chair, no, I don't, um, kind of preliminary, I don't think it's that complicu- complicated a question for our. Council to, uh, give us a response back on, but. Um, until I've asked, I, I don't know the answer. So I'm sorry. It's really, it's really the legal fees are the only cost, madam chair.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, um, as far as being a colossal waste of time, uh, I have to disagree. Um, in, in my personal opinion, we are cancelling out a levy through, uh, lower water rates. Um, so it, it doesn't really, in my opinion, and in my, I believe, makes sense to continue. Uh, it looks to me like we, eh, with, uh, administrations reports. Uh, we would have that information whether or not it's possible to rescind by law one dash two zero zero seven. So if there's no further conversation. We will go to the recommended motion, which is that council direct administration to prepare a report. For a future meeting regarding the ability to rescind a local improvement levy in, or pardon me, such as Collington Water Supply. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
And that is carried six to two.
I think it was six to three. There's nine.
Pardon me, I did not see, uh, I did, excuse me.
Yeah.
Uh, I would ask that respect be remain in this room, please, and thank you. Uh, I did not see the person, uh, join Zoom as this jumping in and out becomes very difficult. Uh, go ahead, please, councillor Capitan.
I would ask that respect goes both way and we are allowed to be on Zoom. So it is up to the chair to make sure that they see everyone and count everyone's vote.
Yes, thank you. And we're all human, as you know, that.
It's not respectful.
Excuse me. Thank you for your comments. If we can please go on now to five point three. Committee of the Whole Recommendation Level of Service Drainage Resolution CW two four dash one seven six, which is on page forty three of your agenda. The recommendation in the report is that council direct administration to bring forward a discussion report regarding level of service policy for drainage work. As well as a budget. Is there any, um, discussion, uh, C A O for your report or, okay? Is there? As recommended, so we have a councillor Cromwell has, uh, put the motion forward as recommended in the report. Is there any discussion? Councillor Hall?
Um, I'm wondering if we can, uh, get some clarity for the table, what we intend to do with the report. And what, uh, what do we think this is gonna cost us in terms of the administration time? Again, I, I have a real concern that we continue, we, we make a list of our council priorities. And then we continue to divert administrative time with these ad hoc one off items that, that come up. That don't get properly prioritized with our, you know, our main master list of, of critical things. And, um, so how long will this take to admin and and what, what are we gonna do with it? Because we've seen in the past where we've asked for reports and then really gotten them and don't know what to do with them once we've received them.
Okay, well, um, Camille, I see your hand up or councillor Hall, I apologize. I'm reading your name on the screen. Um, if you would like to go ahead, C A O with the question that, um, the questions that councillor Hall has asked, please.
Um, yeah, that's, that's a matter for council to determine if that it's the best use of time. Um, it's our job to put together, uh, advice to council. Um. Yeah, it's probably, it's gonna take us probably half a day to put together an R F D on what the, uh. What this would look like if you actually wanted to take on a drainage level of service and come back with a policy and bylaw in the next year. Uh, that doesn't mean that, that's the pro, that's just the project outline. That's not the project. So and a budget and I've been through this before with another county. This county probably has more drainage licenses than that county in its name. Um, it's gonna be a big project, uh, just fair warning. When the report comes back, it'll be. It'll be big.
Thank you very much. Councillor Wallack?
Thank you. Um, yeah, just for clarification, is this for all drainages or just the registered drainages?
Um, madam chair, I guess we would need direction from council at that time. Um, we pro, uh, I, I would certainly start with, um. Uh, priorities that I know that the county is responsible for. So that's, uh, and unfortunately today, we don't have a, a policy to guide us into what it is. We have no policy. So we would start with, um. Looking at the impact on our infrastructure first, because we're responsible for that. And then anything that's licensed in our name, anything that's not licensed in our name. And but for some reason we continue to do, it would probably be looked at, but we'd be looking for direction from council. Why are we doing that? If it's not our current responsibility, but I don't know. Um, we will bring back something and tell you the magnitude of what it could be. That, and if you want to, that's not even certain, uh, setting the terms of reference. If you want to set, set the terms of reference after that, there's still plenty of time.
Thank you very much. Councillor Anderson?
Thank you. Um, this seems like a really important topic to take the time and get right and have a good thorough discussion about what level of service we want to set. And we just deferred to discussion on development of development enforcement, which is also a very important and thorough topic. To the level of service discussion and I'm kind of. I would be in favor of, um, deferring this to that same level of service discussion. I think that we need to have that bigger, uh, whole picture kind of discussion. Versus trying to change administrations priorities right now to try and get this done ahead of that discussion. So, um, I guess I'm opposed to the current. Motion that's on the floor, just because I think it should be also treated the same and deferred to that larger level of service discussion.
And I wonder, um, is it possible or or if council wishes to maybe have a friendly amendment to the motion to be presented at the level of discussion meeting in twenty twenty five?
I'd make that a formal amendment if you'd like.
A formal amendment? Okay. All right. Is there any, uh, further discussion before we consider the amendment? Councillor Mins?
Yeah, I agree, uh, honestly with, uh. With looking at the drainages and what drainages we should be looking at, we should just stay with licensed ones, just due to the fact that how many there are out there. And if we start dealing with little drainages that go across, uh, farmland and and through musk eggs and stuff like that. It'll be a never ending project because, uh, there's many of them out there. So staying with the licensed drainages would be with our name on it would be way better.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? And, um, I know I'm in favor of, of the amendment. Um, I do believe that this is definitely something that we should be looking at. Uh, we're currently sitting only at, uh, fifty one thousand, I believe, for the twenty twenty five budget. And considering the issues that are coming up with drainage and the, uh, amount of time that, um, uh. Is required. It is important that we make sure that we absolutely provide this service and get it right. So on the amendment, if ever there's no further discussion, I don't see. Um, the amendment is to be presented at the level of service discussion twenty twenty five. Are ready for the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And I see there are no opposed, so that would be nine and O on the amendment. On the original motion as amended, that council direct administration to bring forward a discussion report. Regarding level of service policy for drainage work as well as a budget to be presented at the level of service discussion twenty twenty five. If there is no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And I see there's no opposed. So that would be nine and O and has carried. Thank you. We're going to, five point four was deleted off the agenda. So if we could move to five point five. And that is twenty twenty five budget forty eight, forty nine, but it is a, uh, request for decision. and that is twenty twenty-five budget forty-eight, forty-nine, but it is a uh request for decision. Page forty-eight. There are three recommendations here. Uh, this is a continuation uh of discussions that took place on our, it was November nineteenth, I believe it was, special meeting. That uh forum was lost. Uh, so we will have those conversations. Is uh their motion that anybody would like to start with?
Uh, recommended, recommended motion to direct administration to bring forward a report to council to discuss future committee of the whole meeting regarding EFT security and implementation uh to direct administration to transfer twenty twenty-three water rates of one water surplus of one fifty-six, six twenty-seven from unrestricted reserves to capital reserves, water equipment and lines. To direct administration to bring forward the utility report to council at an upcoming committee of the whole meeting detailing options to allow for lower water rates.
Okay, so as recommended. All right. If we could begin on discussion, please, Counselor.
I'd like to request to split the question, please.
Absolutely. In all three different. I'm sorry, that was each one?
Yeah, just to vote on the three
Separate.
recommended motions separately, please.
So if we maybe could start then with discussion on recommendation number one, which was to direct administration to bring forward a report to council for discussion at a future committee of the whole meeting regarding EFT security and implementation, EFT meaning electronic funds transfer. Counselor Wallach, I have, see your hand?
Thank you. Um, this motion seems very operational, and I feel like the administration is doing a good job of um becoming more efficient and upgrading their system, so I don't know if we need to do this. I feel like we should just leave this in administration's hands, and if they want to do it, they do it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other further discussion? Not seeing any hands on Zoom. Um, the reason for the uh, the recommendation and the request for deficient de- decision, um, yes, it would be operational, however, um, it would also uh, I'm assuming, uh, come to council for implementation if there's costs involved and those types of things, and considering our current uh postal strike that I think we're in a one month uh already, um, these are types of things that would be um, in, in my personal opinion, uh, something that would be very beneficial and uh actually probably uh would save time uh and efficiency in the future. So I realize it's a huge undertaking. Uh, totally understand that. I realize that this isn't something that's going to happen overnight or even in the next couple of months. But to be working towards it would be uh amazing, in my opinion. Counselor Cromwell, and I see your hand is up. Uh, Counselor Hall, but we'll start with Counselor Cromwell, please.
Thank you. You know, it's a great point. We've often talked in this room about how we can streamline operations, how we can make things easier for administration, for ratepayers, for the people live far out in the community, and if we can get something as simple as the EFT up and running properly, uh, that would be a win-win for everybody. I don't see why we wouldn't talk about it.
Thank you. Counselor Hall?
Well, I agree that there's value in this type of technology. I also believe that it is an administrative thing, and this is another diversion that council is impose, another diversion from our priorities that council is imposing on administration. So I would rather leave it in their capable hands to bring this to us as a solution when they feel they have both the, the internal capacity and the timing is appropriate. Th- this w- we're once again adding new priorities to their list, and I think we need to be careful about protecting the time of administration and allowing them to focus on the the really critical um big picture priorities that, that are important to council. Th- this is this is operational, and they'll, they'll get to it when the timing is right, and they have capacity.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, and, and I guess a part of the recommendation is uh, the discussion at a future committee of the whole, which gives administration the latitude in which to um, when they feel comfortable uh that they are ready to bring that forward. Um, it's, it's built in to the, to the recommendation. Is there any further discussion? Alrighty. So on the uh motion to direct administration to bring forward a report to council for discussion at a future committee of the whole meeting regarding EFT security and implementation, all those in favor? All those opposed?
Nay. Nay.
So the count is six to three. That motion passes. On the second recommendation, to direct administration to transfer the twenty twenty-three water surplus of a hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-seven dollars from unrestricted reserves to capital reserves, uh, water equipment and lines. Is there a motion for that? As recommended, Counselor Minz? Is there any discussion? No? Well, we go straight to the vote on that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I see that was all ayes and no opposed. Nine and oh. Thank you. And the item three, uh, to direct administration to bring forward a utility report to council at an upcoming committee of the whole meeting detailing options to allow for lower rates. Is there any discussion? All right, we'll go to that vote.
Sorry, I couldn't get it's hard to work that little hand raising uh thing. I, I think um, again, this is something we need would be better served if we provided administration more direction through a, uh, just a general council discussion at committee of the whole, where we talk about a plan and a strategy and how this can fit into whether we want to use water as a, as a tool for economic growth, or whether we want to use it as a tool to um just make life more affordable and the region more attractive. But I, I, I think rather than giving administration a, a very broad come up with ideas, we we would serve the purpose better by providing some boundaries for them so that they know what we're, what we're trying to accomplish with the strategy, because that, that way their time is again more um, more effectively spent.
And thank you, and I will um ask the CAO, um, is this motion detailed enough to uh bring forward options to allow for lower water rates? Do you feel you need more information on what council is looking for?
Yeah, Madam Chair, um that's kind of a big question. Um lower rates, you know, we could bring back a report showing it's one percent lower. Is that what council wanted the report to say, like? Yeah, what, what are you thinking? And my understanding was the current bylaw was adopted on a user-paid principal cost recovery. Um, so we'd have to look at depending on what your target is, uh, there's really only way to uh reduce those rates, and that is to subsidize the utility, like almost all small to me uh medium municipalities in Alberta. Um, it's just a matter of how big you want the subsidy to be, that's all, that's
Thank you.
This is actually not that complicated, but would, you know, lower is, could be one percent, or it could be ninety percent. That's it lowers a big range.
Lower is a big range, and as it mentioned, um, and thank you for that. Um, the options um that would be provided, I would hope would um get us to what we were talking about in our uh special meeting. Um, and that was um considering uh the region, we are the highest in our region in these rates. Um, so I would hope that one of those options would get us into uh where we're lower or uh in, in um comparison to our, to our neighbors. Um, and I think we, we had that conversation. We, we discussed as well bringing back um the average cubes used by residential and, and commercial customers to, to basically understand the minimums, um, which would again, would lower rates. Um, we discussed the lowering of the reserve contributions, um, which again, would lower the rates. We discussed uh subsidizing water supply across Athabasca County. Um, we've had several discussions uh with regards to what council um, and, you know, counselors and council are bringing forward and hoping to see. So I'm hoping that with the information in the prior discussions, that uh the report that comes forward would um be, be guided by those discussions. Counselor Wall?
Thanks. Um, I, I would like to see a cost comparison to municipalities similar to ours, like with a similar water system. Um, our neighbors are not similar to us, so I would like to see um, administration find municipalities that run like ours with a commission and have their own water treatment plant and their costs and their, their subsidies.
So we have another counsel opinion on, on how to guide that uh, that utility uh report and the options provided. Is there any other weigh-in? Counselor Hall?
Um, I think there is maybe still a little bit of lack of clarity, given that everybody has, you know, different ideas on where that goes, so I would propose that we uh table this until after council has had a discussion at committee of the whole to narrow down to, to provide specific direction. Table until councils had a discussion at committee of the whole to provide specific direction on how we would like to see the rates lowered.
So that would be a postpone to the next committee of the whole meeting?
Table.
Uh, table is a different, uh table is table it today. Postpone would actually bring you to a uh committee of the whole. Uh, I will just go to our procedures. Uh, to postpone, uh, it's not debatable, of course, simple majority is required. Um, and again, to table is for today. So would you like it to come back to a committee of the whole? I would suggest postpone.
Well, I don't, I don't, I guess I'll leave that to you, because the, if you're referring to the procedural bylaw, we have postponed indefinitely and table, so um, I'll, I'll leave the choice of that wording to you.
Thank you, and being
Intent is to kick it forward so that we can get some clarity as a group and provide a narrow set of tasks for administration to make the best use of their valuable time.
Okay, so I would uh uh propose that we use postpone uh to the uh upcoming uh committee of the whole meeting in January. Is that where we're at, folks?
I, I didn't use a timeframe. I will leave it to administration to create the space to to put that on one that they believe is appropriate, that they have the capacity to handle.
All right, and it is a non-debatable, a non-debatable uh postpone. And I believe you had mentioned upcoming committee of the whole meeting. So we did not specify a date, so upcoming committee of the whole meeting, postpone, simple majority is required. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? One. Oh, I'm sorry, you were opposed as well? You were in favor. Thank you. So it is eight and one to postpone. Alrighty. Ah, see, it is just a few minutes after eleven, so if we could please recess at this point, before we go on to bylaws, we will return at eleven thirty. At this point, before we go on to bylaws, we will return at eleven thirty. Thank you very much. We'll reconvene. We are at page on our agenda, uh, item six point one, page fifty. Of your agenda, it is the bylaws zero zero one dash twenty twenty five borrowing bylaw. And it will be for the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven financial years. If we are ready to go. Uh, the recommendation is that first reading be given to bylaw zero zero one two zero two five being the borrowing bylaw. Thank you. Uh, counselor Minz has provided the recommendation that we do first reading. Uh, bylaw zero zero one two zero two five, the borrowing bylaw. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
I.
I.
All right, that is currently eight and zero. The uh, second recommendation that's second reading be given to bylaw zero zero one dash two zero two five being the borrowing bylaw. That is with counselor Chamsik has. Offered the recommendation or the motion or the second reading, pardon me, the second reading be given to bylaw zero zero one two zero two five. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I.
Thank you, and no opposed. That is nine and all. Is there unanimous consent to proceed to third reading of bylaw zero zero one twenty twenty five? I'm not hearing opposition. Sorry.
It is.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Counselor Cromwell. Consideration be given to proceed to third reading of bylaw zero zero one twenty twenty five being the borrowing bylaw. No discussion, all those in favor? And opposed?
I.
Two opposed, so that's seven and two.
I was four.
Oh. Yes, yeah, seven and two, yeah. Correct, we had two opposed. Therefore, we will not go on to third reading. I don't. Six point two, which is on page fifty six of your agenda. This is the election bylaw zero two three dash twenty twenty four. Is there any discussion for the report or anything you'd like to bring forward? From administration?
Madam Chair and members of council, I just want to point out that there are portions or elements within the bylaw that require us to have it passed by December thirty first. And also that uh, with this bylaw, we would be repealing a very old bylaw that we found that was still active. In nineteen seventy one, so that's a little bit of a housekeeping.
Okay, so um, should this all pass? Do we add that uh, to repeal that by law?
It's within the bylaw already.
It's when, okay, I appreciate that. Thank you so very much. All right, to first reading. Counselor, I I looked this way, so counselor Chamzak would like to give first reading to bylaw zero two three dash two zero two for the election bylaw. Any discussion? Counselor Hall.
Um, there. I mean, I I have a little bit of a concern that the timing of this, this seems like some significant changes and we haven't had. A lot of opportunity to discuss it or even. Seventy two hours or since Friday when the agenda came out to reflect on it, but one of the things I noticed under six point six point three. Um, I think. The email address will not be functional if we're going to write that into the bylaw. And I also um. Have questions reading part six point nine maybe for admin, so we've said that we won't share or that um, no candidate or anyone can. Can make copies of the register, but I'm wondering why that's even necessary if earlier in the bylaw, we've said we won't even show it to them. So there there's that, and then as it relates to bylaw twenty two dash zero two one. Um, I'm curious why we wouldn't just write that in under section seven point three. And if clean up. This whole um. Get to a place where we have a single bylaw that that covers the election. Data and not have to refer back out to another, to another bylaw, so consolidate them together. And I think the other note I had was questions around, do we have any idea? How much this will cost and. Does administration have any advice for us on how we um? We're gathering a lot of sensitive information, I guess, and I'm I'm worried about how we protect that information. In terms of data leaks and hacks, I I don't. I don't like the the. The level of detail we're we're looking to collect.
I'm assuming you would like to ask administration for those items that you would like clarified?
That, well, our general discussion, I guess, how everybody else feels, but or administration might given probably has the best knowledge. Um, maybe they're the most uh. Qualified to respond.
Yeah, Madam Chair, with, I'll work backwards from some of your questions until I forget the question. Um, so as with respect to privacy and security, unfortunately, the province enacted. New laws that require us to do. Everything in this bylaw, so we're not going beyond what the province is asking us to do, we're required to do it. So. The province drove us towards this and it was recently enacted, not that long ago. Um, for your question about um, the urgency, yes, it was uh. Uh, this is the first time this issue has been formally placed on council's plate. We did bring the impacts of bill twenty and the local authorities election act to committee of the whole in recent past. And council was advised that the province gave royal assent to the the act, which. Which brought it into play. All municipalities are faced with doing this um. On the December agendas of many municipalities is a similar election bylaw, which we based ours off of. We noted the spelling mistake in the email, that is correct. As for cost, I believed we included an additional fifty thousand in this year's budget, which is on later in the agenda. Due to the changes in the act. So, and that's really. Pretty modest for us, um, compared to some of the other municipalities that have had to give up their. Um, tabulator machines, which if you're a big municipality, it's going to cost them a lot of money or and delay to uh. Uh, to uh, hand uh, count every ballot. For us, that's not a big deal, so it didn't affect our budget that much. We are already doing it. We didn't have electronic tabulators, so there are big impacts and it's. This is not driven by administration, this is a hundred percent driven by changes to legislation.
Thank you very much. Does that satisfy your questions, Counselor Hall?
I I would like to, you know, see an amendment that includes twenty two oh one baked right into the document. I think it just gives us a chance to to clean this up a little bit.
Is that an um? I guess, is there an amendment that we would, is there a motion that we would create for that? However, uh, in doing so and for this to come back, I believe we would need a special meeting to do that, if I'm not mistaken?
Madam Chair, if you uh. Didn't want to adopt as presented today or as amended with a minor minor typo correction. Um. We would either have to have a special meeting before year end or um. You could adopt today and if you said, but bring us back a new bylaw in January that incorporates both bylaws together. Um, perhaps that's a way to move forward, if that's council's pleasure, but nomination day opens on January second.
Thank you.
Our first day back with the office open.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Counselor Minz.
I think we we've been bouncing this this around about the timelines and and how we over. Extend ourselves into administration and stuff like this. Why don't we just adopt this bylaw with? The wording that's in there and. We could, yeah, we can bring it back later or whatever, but just let let's just adopt this and and move on. Like. Like honestly. We we're having to do this because. The provincial government is telling us to do this. And administration has done a very good job of putting this all together so we can, so we can actually be. Be uh. Yeah, so it can be completed on time, like, let's let's move on here, let's get the readings done and be done with it.
Thank you, and and I agree, I want to first uh, extend uh. A huge thank you to administration, as as Counselor Hall mentioned uh, previous. Um, there are a lot of uh, items on your plate, as we're in budget time and now we're in audit time, we're year end, we're doing all of these things. And administration uh, is very much appreciated for bringing this forward. Uh, as as CAO mentioned, this is a direction of the province, we really don't have any choice. Um, I would also like to see all three readings go, if you would like to put a motion on the table. Uh, Counselor Hall to bring it back in January for those changes, I think that that would be an excellent compromise. Uh, and would keep us moving forward. Does that sound fair?
I'm sorry, are you asking me?
Yes, does that sound fair?
That seems reasonable, do we want to um, between first and second readings, propose that motion?
Okay. Well, we'll start with, I believe it was Counselor Chamzak. To give first reading to bylaw zero two three dash twenty twenty four. Election bylaw. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, pardon me. I'd missed you, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Um. When I read through this and. I appreciate. How in-depth this is and it it took a bit to read through it and try to comprehend. Um, item six point three point six. That the register may include whether the person is a public school or separate school resident. Kind of questioning if we are required to include that. Or if that was just on the. Recommendations?
Um, if if I may, it does say pursuant to section four nine uh, five of the act. Uh, the permanent lectures register may contain only one. Only the following information for each person included in the permanent electors register, so I believe it's part of the act. But um, if you wouldn't mind clarifying.
Yes, Madam Chair, it is part of the act.
Thank you, and. Line six point nine, I'm not comfortable including that. In the bylaw, um. I just think it opens it up in contradiction to item six point seven. Where it says we will not share the register or the information contained. Uh, I think that then saying that. The people that you said you weren't going to share with it can't photograph it or copy it. Um, kind of. Blurs those lines and I just don't think that's clear enough to establish that we are. Committed to protecting that information on behalf of the people we're collecting it for and will not be sharing it.
Could I ask in conjunction to that, i- is there a circumstance where those individuals would actually see the register? Like during voting perhaps or something like that?
No, Madam Chair, the likelihood is not. But again, we're just aligning ourselves to the act.
Okay. So this, uh, just to be clear, six point nine is part of the act? Yes, it is.
And just to complicate the answer a little bit, we just signed a data sharing agreement with Elections Alberta. Which is a new process that we have to do uh, was signed yesterday, so we have to share. That list with them and help them build the list, basically. Um, and so do we a hundred percent understand? The privacy of that list, um. Not one hundred percent, uh, that actually gets shared with Elections Alberta, and if they have other laws that allow them to. Share that list, I, you know, I'm a little unclear on that, since we were required to kind of race ahead and and. Share the or sign an agreement with Elections Alberta.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hall.
Does this um, then seem like another downloading of uh, the government dumping? Onto us something they should be doing and because we don't get paid by them for this. But they're they're forcing us to collect data for them at our expense. It's just another example, I I want to highlight for. All of us that have more downloading of the provincial government onto the municipalities without compensation.
That would be correct, we are being.
Madam Chair, there are many municipalities that I talked to at RMA convention that. Saw the entire exercise as a whole bunch of downloading and and to quote you from earlier in the meeting, it. A lot of people described this as a solution in search of a bunch of problems for most municipalities, we. We don't have election issues in most small and medium municipalities, I don't even know about the mid-large municipalities, so. Um, nobody's thrilled about this, we didn't need extra work, so, but we're doing it and we'll do our best.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion before we go to first reading? All right, Counselor Chan Chamzak would like to give first reading to bylaw zero two three twenty twenty four election bylaw. All those in favor?
I.
I. I.
I believe that's eight opposed. Eight and one. There was a motion, pardon me. Oh, Counselor Hall.
I say, Madam Chair, as promised, I would be willing to make a motion to direct administration to bring. Back to the first council meeting in January, a revised version of this bylaw that consolidates. Bylaw twenty two dash two zero one into the. Into this this document.
Hey, so procedurally, and just before we um, I tried to write that down as quick as I could, but before we go to that motion. Um, being that first reading did not pass, we. Well, I thought you were opposed. Pardon me, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. All right, so the motion itself, um. Directed administration to bring a revised copy.
A revised version.
Revised version?
To consolidate bylaw twenty two dash two zero one.
Twenty. Twenty two dash zero one?
Into section seven.
Into section seven?
For the first meeting in January.
First meeting in January. All right, did everybody catch that? Hopefully, we don't need it reread. All right, all those in favor?
I.
I.
That's four eyes, four eyes, all those opposed? That would be five opposed, motion fails. Ready, so we're going to go to second reading. To bylaw zero two three twenty twenty four election bylaw, Counselor Gerlock.
Motion to go to second reading.
Thank you. Motion to move second reading to bylaw zero two three dash twenty twenty four election bylaws on the floor. All those, is there any, we don't need to have any further discussion, I'm assuming? All those in favor?
I.
I believe that was six and opposed.
I.
And three opposed.
Nay, rather.
Got it. Six and three. Do we have unanimous consent, that motion, who would like to make? Counselor Minz would like to make the motion for unanimous consent to proceed to third and final reading of bylaw zero two three twenty twenty four. All those in favor? I believe that's five, any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Alrighty, that's four. Five and four, so we will be recalling a special meeting uh, as soon as possible. To have this uh, carried forward as the requirement is uh, by the province. Thank you. Alrighty, so we're moving on to new business. Which is seven point one, page sixty seven of your agenda. Seven, or pardon me, seven point one is Community Rail Advocacy Alliance membership, is there a motion? Counselor Anderson would like to.
Recommended motion.
To have the recommended motion that council commits to fund the membership for the Community Rail Advocacy Alliance in twenty twenty five, is there any discussion? All right, we'll move to the uh, the vote. All right, we'll move to the uh, the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I believe that's nine, no opposed. Nine and all, thank you. Item seven point two, page sixty nine of your agenda. This is the tax recovery reserve bids. Uh, the recommendation is that council sets the reserve bid for northeast thirty five seventy one seventeen west of the fourth at one million eighty five thousand and adopts the recommended terms and conditions of sale as shown in schedule A. Recommended motion is through councillor Minns. Motion is recommended, is there any discussion? Councillor Anderson.
Thank you. Um, through the chair to administration, I'm just kind of wondering how the recommended reserve bid was calculated, if it's based on an appraisal or the assessment or kind of what was used for a reference for that number?
It's C A O.
Madam Chair, we tendered for a commercial appraisal and uh, selected a winning bid and a commercial appraisal was performed for that property.
Thank you.
Follow, let's follow up. I guess if council was to go into closed session or later in the meeting, could we see that appraisal document? Before deciding on this, I just, a million dollars seems like a real hefty price tag and I, being that we've previously said that we regretted potentially reserve bids that we had set, I'd just kind of like to see that and be comfortable with that prior to setting that.
Um, so I guess the process would be the request to table till uh, table this until after closed?
If administration states that they could provide us with a copy enclosed, then I would make a motion to table.
Okay.
Until later in the meeting, when we're in closed session.
We could provide the appraisal.
All right. Is that what you would like to do then, is table until after closed session?
Please.
All right, so that is non-debatable?
Table during closed session.
Table during closed session?
Please.
Okay, so to table this item during, to take place during closed session? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I believe that's nine, no opposed. Nine and all. So I just got to make a note so that I remember. Alrighty. Item number seven point three, page seventy three of your agenda is an amendment to the twenty twenty four budget. Uh, the recommendation is that council approve payment for twenty twenty four lobbyist services from surplus economic development budget in twenty twenty four and direct the remaining surplus twenty twenty four economic development budget to the operating reserve to fund the lobbyist in twenty twenty five. Is there a motion? Councillor Minns would like to do the recommended motion. Is there any discussion? Councillor Hall?
I just put on so I could vote.
Okay, thank you. If there's no discussion, we'll go to that vote. All those in favor of the recommend, recommendation?
Aye.
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 Believe that's eight, any opposed? Eight and one. Alrighty, we're moving on to page seventy five of your agenda, which is item seven point four, the twenty twenty five operating and capital budgets and the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine operating and capital plans. We did receive um, an amendment this morning to our budget summary. Um, the only uh, item that was added was the add back depreciation net enhancements. Um, was, I think it was just a difference of sixty two hundred dollars that needed to just be uh, corrected there. Um, and I believe, did everybody get a copy of that? If not, um, we'll get that to you. Just the one item. All right. First of all, thank you. This has been a long process and I understand how difficult this is and how taxing it is on everyone, so we really, I personally, and I'm quite sure council really appreciates all your work and uh, that has gone into this and we are at the stage where um, this is not a budget that is currently written in stone, as I know we're still working through it. We're still working on it, it is completely amendable. Um, and we will continue to work on this in the, in the early parts of the new year. Um, so if there is any discussion today that anybody would like to have, please uh, go ahead, otherwise you will be given more opportunity to have conversation about this budget. And if I'm not mistaken, we have to have a budget passed by December thirty first as well, thank you very much. So that's also another requirement that we're looking towards, so within mind, again, it's not written in stone, it is amendable and uh, you will have more opportunity. We will be having further discussion for sure, for sure in the year as well. So is there any discussion that anybody would like to have or a recommended motion they'd like to bring forward? Councillor Anderson.
Um, the updated budget summary page that we were provided with this morning indicates that there would be a reserve withdrawal of two hundred and forty four thousand two twenty three to cover the operating costs for the year. And I know that that can change once the new updated assessments come in and we talk mill rates and whatnot, but I'm just not comfortable budgeting or planning to re- uh, withdraw from reserves to cover operating, like I think we have such great capital funding requirements here. And it just does not seem responsible to withdraw from reserves to cover that, so I'd like to kind of look at it and see where we could find two forty four to balance out that budget without needing with reserve withdrawals for operating purposes.
Okay, thank you. And that is something we can further discuss in the new year. For sure, um, unless you have any recommendations that you'd like to offer on where that would come from.
Uh, no, I have no problem. In the past, we've passed uh, interim budgets that are like fifty percent of the current year's budget. Um, I'm not willing to vote in favor of passing something that's predicting a deficit like this, so I would like to take the time and relook at it before passing it and maybe pass something else just to meet that requirement.
And I think um, as we've had in in prior discussions as well, with regards to doing a fifty percent interim, it really ties hands of our administration to go forward in work that they need to do, uh, not only for cost-saving measures for tenders and whatnot, but uh, efficiencies as well. So um, uh, I understand what you are asking to do, um. Is that there isn't a motion? Is there a motion that someone would like to put forward? Minns, councillor Minns?
I'll do the recommended motion. Council adopts the twenty twenty five operating capital budget and operating capital plans as presented with the understanding that that we will be uh, we'll be probably moving this budget around a bit in the next couple of months. Once we get our tax rate bylaw in place and 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 all this other stuff, this budget is going to move, so, so I am totally agreeing that that we shouldn't be taking uh, reserves out to cover operating, but that's, you know, there's also recreational, what are we at? A negative two million dollars in recreation and stuff like that, like there's lots to look at here, right? You know, that we can move around, so I think uh, we were all in the, all in the thought of of moving this budget forward to have more consideration in the, in the later months. But at least we moved uh, at least we moved the uh, the budget forward and and got it in place before the thirty first.
Okay, so the recommended, recommended motion is that council adopts the twenty twenty five operating and and capital budgets and twenty twenty five, twenty twenty nine operating and capital plans as presented, that motion councillor Minns has made, um, and uh, sorry, yeah, and just um, and I agree, we have a plenty of opportunity to continue to work with this budget. I personally would like to see some more, I would like to see road construction come back. You know, uh, I think that that's something else that's extremely important and we still need to have these conversations. Uh, we're going to be, of course, looking at uh, assessments, we're going to be looking at all of that information that'll be coming forward, um, you know, to see where we're at, so. Um, I I am definitely in favor of of the motion, um.
And as follow up, if the intention is to bring this back and have further discussions in January, then a fifty percent budget shouldn't be that big of a deal. It's if we're not going to talk about it again till May, that that would really become a an issue. And if the intention is to bring it back in January, then fifty percent really wouldn't, they're not signing a lot of contracts in the first two weeks of January, right?
I couldn't answer that one, I'm not sure what uh, administration has waiting in the wings there, but I certainly wouldn't want to tie their hands. Councillor Hall?
Um, I would. So I'm in agreement with some of the comments that we've we've got to to withdraw from reserves for operating is like borrowing to buy groceries and we, we need to figure that out. We went from a few short weeks ago having a seven hundred thousand dollar surplus or reserve contribution to a quarter million dollar with reserve withdrawal and I I agree and I've heard from a number of people at the table that it seems like there's some general agreement, this does need more work. So I would propose an amendment to um, approve at the operating budget at fifty percent and the capital budget at one hundred percent. And this ensures that it it puts it back on our agenda as a priority. Um, and a partial approval does not unreasonably tie administrative hands and in fact is probably fair, because if you approve it a hundred percent, it creates a situation where they may start making commitments that we then later have to unwind because we've made made other adjustments. I'm also a bit concerned in again, because of that, that deficit, we're also talking about um, the potential to subsidize water and that's not included in here. Um, I would really, now, we we may choose to do something different, we may decide instead to tighten our belt and benefit all rate payers through a zero or no tax rate increase, which I think might be a, a practical alternative to aspire to in place of a water subsidy. But I, I have felt through this process, there has been no restraint, we have just added and not made any difficult cuts or any um, tightening of the belt. So I'm, I'm wondering if it would be reasonable to propose through either a separate motion or otherwise, that admin provide us ideas for a four to five percent reduction in spending, which would bring us back into a a positive and create some space for um, the potential to, to address either a low tax rate increase or water subsidy or a little bit of both. So, but the amendment is to approve the operating at fifty percent and the capital budget at one hundred percent.
Thank you. Um, I believe some of that information uh, will be coming back uh, that you were looking for. Uh, is been, administration has already been directed to 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 bring that back. Um. Is there any discussion on the amendment that uh, anyone else would like to weigh in? All right, um, go ahead councillor Minns.
Um, most of the time when budgets get cut back and everything, it's usually on capital. It's not usually on operating and 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 stuff like that, so um, if you're worried about committing, committing on the operating and and then are not committing on the operating and and but committing on the capital, that's that's kind of, to me, it's kind of, kind of a, a shot in the dark, because all of a sudden if we say, okay, we're going to go a hundred percent capital and we go out and buy everything that we that we put in there, we can't cut back on that, so.
Well, the, the problem is in the, is in the operating budget, not in the capital budget.
Yeah, but there's, but it's all tied together in the long, in the long end of it, it's tied together. If we, if we need more money for operating, that means we got to cut back possibly on capital somewhere. And uh, and it'd be great to be able to save, save ten fifteen percent on operating, but but uh, that usually comes through capital. When, when I had any dealings with this budget, it was like you give a wish list and be prepared that that, that wish list does not come totally true. So that's my point of view is is I guess if we're not gonna if we're not, I I wouldn't feel comfortable on passing a hundred percent on the capital. There's some big items in that capital purchase.
And I think, uh, you know, the, the point is, is that more discussions will be taking place. I mean, we've had opportunities that uh, to have these conversations and um, had to end those, that meeting and so, you know, we're, we're uh, sitting here now, uh, having a further conversation, which of course is, is definitely a great thing to have the debate. Um. I'm not in agreeance with the uh, amendment, I will be voting opposed to that. Um, just because I know that administration is also of the understanding that we are bringing this back for further discussion. So I don't think administration is just going to inadvertently take off and say this is written in stone. Uh, they are knowing, they know that, and so um, if there's no further discussion or if there's uh, any other concerns or anything like that, we will, it's I'm not seeing any, so I guess we will.
Can I add one other comment that relates to that uh, chair? And that really is, if more discussions are taking place, then there's no real risk to, to proposing a partial budget and it ensures that the, this comes back to the table. Um, the other piece that I wanted to bring up and I had a note here on page eighty three, we have listed primary industries as oil, gas and agriculture, and I'm not sure how we missed forestry, which is pretty significant to the economy of our region, so just as a in that budget document, if that gets published anywhere, that's in a correction that we probably need to look at.
Thank you. Alrighty, so if we can vote on the amendment, is everybody ready? The amendment to pr- approve the operating budget at fifty percent and the capital at one, one hundred percent, all those in favor?
Oh. Aye.
Aye.
Can we split that question?
Cool.
Okay, um, sure. We will split the amendment. All those in favor to approve the operating at fifty percent?
Aye.
Aye.
Believe that's three, all those opposed? I believe that's five and if I'm not mistaken, we've lost councillor Wallack. So that would be five and three, that amendment has failed. The second amendment is to approve the capital at one hundred percent. All those in favor?
You don't need an amendment on that.
I'm sorry?
You don't really need an amendment on that because that's baked into the main motion, the only reason that they're tied, they were together is
I agree.
There's no amendment there to make at this point.
I agree, just wasn't sure if I should say it or not before, you know, someone jumped down my throat there. All right, so we were, we're done with the amendments, they failed. We're moving on to the main motion that council adopts the twenty twenty five operating and capital budgets and twenty twenty five, twenty twenty nine operating and capital plans as presented. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, all those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
That would be three, so it is five and three, the motion has passed. I think it's time to break for lunch. We will recess until one, I'm not even sure, one forty? Or twelve, twelve forty, pardon me?
I have an additional motion that I would like to make as regards to seven point four when we get back.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. We would like to reconvene our December tenth meeting. I believe we are now at eight point one in our agenda.
Madam Chair, I had a motion.
Oh, pardon me. Thank you. Yes, you had an additional motion that you would like to put through. I just read that note.
Thank you.
Please go ahead.
Um, I mean, the preamble to that is to say we're regularly at our table talking about how our ratepayers and residents in the region are strapped. We see that data in the news that people are struggling all over the country with the escalating costs. And so I think for me, um, I would like to make a motion that administration be directed to provide to the next council meeting ideas for a four to five percent reduction in operational spending. And then council can talk about it and look, is there anything in there that we can can do or would be willing to tighten our belt on? I think that it's important for us to set the example and and work to tighten our belt. And I think it's irresponsible for us to not take some action and to pass a budget that is, you know, with a deficit projected. So the motion is then for men to provide ideas for a four to five percent reduction in operational spending by the next council meeting. Or by, how about by the end of January?
Okay, so if I understand correctly, it is for a direct administration to provide a report to uh, obtain a four to five percent reduction in operational spending?
Sorry, yes, and that shouldn't limit them to just hitting four or five as an option. If they're six percent found, council can go through and select and maybe choose some that amount to a two percent reduction or, but I think I think if we, I think we have a capable team at the county that if challenged can rise to that task.
Okay, thank you. Um, I understand exactly where you're coming from and, and um, I feel that administration has been doing an excellent job in uh, coming forward with a budget and considering efficiencies and where we can be. Um, but for sure, we'll put that motion on the table. Is there any discussion before we do that? Okay, pretty quiet bunch. Yep, go ahead. Okay, there's a couple of discussions, Councilman, Councilor Gerlach.
I kind of think you do that at the beginning of the process as opposed to the end of the process.
Thank you, Councilmen.
I'm thinking the same way, like, like I can understand trying to find deficiencies and stuff like that with what we're doing, but uh, we need to actually get the right costs first, uh, before we can say that they're not efficient. So coming up with a, a plan sounds like to me like it's a service issue to me, like, like, like we're saying cut back somewhere, but we don't. Where do we cut back when we don't even know what the actual cost is going to be? Like, and we decide that cost through the budget. And then we say, you know what? We're not going to pass this full budget right now because we need to find efficiencies. So that's when council can, or not council, uh, administration can come back at the same time we're trying to pass a budget that, you know what? It's going to cost us this much, but through efficiencies, we've actually saved on this. So I don't know. It's like tasking administration with, uh, with another project. At the same time, they're doing a project of the budget. So cannot all be part and parcel of the budget of trying to find efficiencies to be able to pass the budget. Because if they bring the budget right now with, with, uh, with a, uh, ask of three hundred thousand, let's say from reserves for operating, it ain't going to pass. We're gonna actually tell them. No, it's, we passed pretty well an interim budget. Okay, we pass an interim budget with the idea of we're going to actually talk about it again. And this is what we're going to do is we're going to discuss the budget again once we get our, uh, because we have to, uh, discuss the taxation bylaw. And, and, and we're not administration knows we're not going to pass a budget at pulling reserves out for operating. We're gonna, there's going to be cuts somewhere, trust me. There'll be cuts, so this, this whole thing of, of doing another project to figure out efficiencies can be done at the same time as a budget is brought forward. That's my point of view. I don't think we need a, I don't think we need another, another project for administration to do. They, they know that they need to bring a zero balance budget at least. And if that means by efficiently cutting somewhere, let's do it. But that's my point of view. I don't think we need to add another, another project on. We keep saying we're overtaxing administration. Let's let them come back with a budget that shows the efficiencies. And then we'll win. It's a win-win. They're doing it at the same time. Right? That's my point of view.
Thank you so much. I, I agree. Um, we're going to be continuing budget discussions and in those budget discussions, what you're asking for is basically going to be, we're going to be having that conversation. So I'm quite sure administration is already uh, been looking at different items and different things and, and working towards where we are trying to get. So I'm, I'm not in favor of adding a full-on-out report. Um, I'm very much, uh, in favor of allowing these budget discussions to continue. Um, Councilor Cromwell.
Thank you. One of those rare days that I agree with Councilor Hall. Uh, I think that there are definitely ways we can find to reduce what the budget obligations are of the county and efficiencies to be made. But I agree with uh, the deputy Reeve and that I'm very confident that that will work out once we continue on in this process and because of that, that trust, I'm willing to to hold off voting in favor of this right now and let the process play through. But I think that is a very valid point that you, you plan for the worst, you hope for the best, and there are ways that we can balance that out a little bit more, but I'm, I definitely think we have to give it the opportunity to, uh, to play out here a little bit, get our tax rate bylaw done, get a few things figured out before we go and add a monumental task on our already overburned administration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, so.
Can I have the final word before we vote, please?
Sure.
I, I would, just because we've heard a couple of things. We've heard it said that, you know, we should be doing this at the beginning. But remember, at the beginning, we had a seven hundred plus thousand dollar surplus. And so it, it, like many things, we all don't catch things on the first time it comes by us. We've now gone from seven hundred thousand dollars positive to a negative two hundred and forty-four thousand and change. Budget is the single most important decision council makes. And we have not told administration to bring back a zero budget. In fact, we just did, even if you call it an interim, we just acknowledged and said it's okay to have this negative. What I've heard is that we expect them to read our minds, and I think they deserve the clarity of hearing us say we would like to see this get back to zero, a net zero or a small positive. And to have that clarity of direction. I'm not asking for a gigantic report. I'm asking for them to come with a list of ideas on how we can make this right. And if, as we've heard, it's already going to happen, then there's actually no risk in passing the motion because they're already doing it anyway, and it won't be a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, I think that was the final word, if I'm not mistaken. So we will, um, look at the motion to direct administration to provide a report uh, with options of four to, with option to create a four to five percent reduction uh, with options of four to, with option to create a four to five percent reduction in operational spending. Is that accurate, Councilor Hall? Does that suffice? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's three opposed. And that's five. So that's five and three, motion fails. Alrighty.
I look forward to seeing these results anyway.
Sounds good. And the next item up for bid here, eight point one. Uh, let's look at page one twelve of your agenda. Trying to get there. And this was the RCMP presentations. Is there, Councilor Chamsik would like to?
Um, I would like to approve with a great, um, information.
Okay. So to receive the RCMP quarterly presentation for information. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I believe there's no opposed. Eight and O. Eight point two, we have on page one thirteen of your agenda, which was the Trident, uh, pump delegation. Is there any, Councilor Anderson?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to direct administration to bring us back a recommendation related to the proposal from Trident Pump. I just think we should hear our admin teams' opinion on that matter before we make a decision.
Okay. So it's recommendation for administration to bring back. Sorry, I'm trying to write it down. To bring back.
To direct administration.
Yep.
To bring back a recommendation related to the proposal from Trident.
Related to the proposal. Okay. Did everybody catch that? Yes. Is there any discussion? Alrighty. So on that motion, and I'm not going to try and reread it. I think everybody knows what it says. All those in favor?
Aye.
I believe that was all ayes, no opposed. All right. So that passes eight and O. Thank you. Item eight point three, page one fourteen of your agenda. We have calendars. Who would like to begin? Councilor Chamsik.
Uh, for December thirteenth, uh, the Northern Lights meeting is canceled. There will be a rural women's, uh, meeting for January, the thirteenth is FCSS and Village, um, Library. The sixteenth will be Town Library. And that is all I have. Thank you.
May I ask the time of the rural women's and the times of the other meetings?
Uh, nine thirty.
Okay.
Town is six P M. And Boyle is seven.
Six P M. Boyle is seven P M. On the thirteenth NFCSS.
Nine thirty, or ten o'clock, sorry.
Ten A M. Alrighty. Um, is there anybody else who has, Councilor Cromwell, and then Councilor Menz?
Thank you. January fifteenth, uh, Community Futures.
Okay. At the time? Sorry?
I believe it's a ten A M.
Ten A M. Okay.
And then on the twenty-seventh of January at ten thirty, uh, healthcare recruitment and retention.
And that's January healthcare is at at ten?
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty. Thank you. Councilmen's?
Just looking here on, uh, January twentieth to the twenty-second is the ASB conference in, in Edmonton, in with, uh, few counselors going probably to that conference from here. Wondering if we could move the community, the whole meeting to possibly January twenty-eighth uh, along with the MPC meeting.
Right after MPC?
Right after MPC.
Right after MPC. All right. Is that, everybody's good with that? Is there any objection? Doesn't appear to be any objection. So that would be moving the, uh, twenty-first Cal meeting committee of the full, I guess it's what I should probably use. Committee of the whole meeting to, uh, January twenty-eighth. Shall we say right after MPC or do we have to give it a time nine forty-five? Immediate following. Thank you. Alrighty.
In order to respect administration's workload, can we set the agenda still effective the twenty-first so that because having two big meetings like that in the same week? I, I mean, maybe we should just ask administration, is it reasonable to try to have them both ready and?
Um, Madam Chair, for most of us, that actually gives us an additional week. So I'm actually happier with that.
Okay. Then I withdraw that comment.
Okay.
Uh, there's greater, there's no greater north than the twenty-third.
Oh, he's canceled the December twenty.
It's not canceled. It was never scheduled that date.
Oh, okay. So that was just an error. Okay. Councilor Anderson?
There's a Boyle intermunicipal committee meeting on December nineteenth.
I'm sorry, no, remember?
Boyle intermunicipal committee meeting, December nineteenth.
December nineteenth. Okay. And we will be announcing, uh, of course, a special meeting coming up. We just have to sort that out on how that, uh, will work. So, um, what was time of your intermunicipal meeting, if you know?
Nine thirty?
Nine thirty. Okay. Awesome. Is anybody else, Councilor Gerlock?
Just Blue Heron on January thirteenth in the afternoon.
Is that a one?
Uh, I think it's two thirty.
Two thirty. Okay. And is that everybody? Is that all Councilor Gerlock now?
Yep.
Yep. Okay. I think that covers it. Is there a motion to accept the calendars as amended, Councilmen's? All those, I'm sure there's no further discussion, but all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Already eight and O. Thank you. We move to eight point five, which is donations, page one sixteen, or pardon me, one eighteen. Um, I, I, I personally like to thank, um, CEO Beck, uh, these donations that are coming forward, they're excellent. People are very happy to see them. So thank you so much for looking after all of that. Is there a motion? To Council Chamsik, um, to receive as rec- as receive the report for information? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And no opposed. So that's eight and O. Ah, committee reports being that, uh, unless somebody has an action item or recommendation from the reports, I will, um, extend my gratitude to all those who have provided the reports, um, is, would anybody like to discuss them? They're all, I'm sure everybody's had a chance to read them. They're excellent reports. Thank you very much. Um, I know I, I personally like hearing what's going on in these committees and, and there's a lot of good things happening. So thank you, everybody for, for doing that. Um, so we do not need a motion. We now can move to closed session.
Motion tender closed.
Thank you very much, Council Cromwell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And no opposed. We're done. Thank you so much for, uh, joining us. We will be back after, uh, we come out of post.